Because I love you and because I, 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 I want to be able to love you enough to tell you these things and command you. Then we can start to look at your relationships. Right? So love the Lord your God with all your heart, soul, mind. Remember, remember to honor the Sabbath day and remember to honor my name in that day. Then, then we'll begin looking at the most intimate, most powerful relationships you have in your life. The other thing that you can see here is that you can see what Satan's been up to as well. When you begin to look at, at, uh, at the fourth commandment, what is the, what is the fourth commandment? Open that up in your, in your catechisms. Find it in the explanation section, not in the front. You know, Martin Luther only wrote the first like 30 pages of the, as of the catechism. Right? And then the explanation section has grown over time. As the church and the culture and the world faces what it faces. Then theologians add to the explanation section over time in order to address what the church and the world is throwing at us in that day. Um, but we want to be in the explanation section, find the fourth commandment. What page you on? What page you on? Seventy-four is one of them? What's the other one? Eighty-one? Anybody got another page for us? I, I feel like yelling bingo. I feel like praise God. Lutheran version of bingo. I, I, uh, so in the fourth commandment, in the fourth commandment, what is the commandment? How does it read? Somebody want to read that for us? Read the commandment. Honor your father and your mother. And then Luther gives his explanation. And in the explanation, he expands from family. He expands to culture. Right? And so in Luther's explanation, somebody read Luther's explanation. What does this mean? And notice that he said there are other authorities, other authority. So here's, so in this commandment, remember out of great love for you, out of great love for you, he, he wants a life for you. And it begins with the most intimate relationships of your life. The relationships that were there at the very beginning, your conception, the, 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 the beginning of your time. He wants to pour grace and blessing out upon you. And he wants structure to be there for you. So that the mechanism of his love, you experience not just between you and him, but you experience it in family. And so, and so you can begin to see that, uh, that if you were Satan, um, you would do everything that you could to tear apart, redefine marriage, family, the institution of, uh, uh, of this honor and this accountability. Here's another thing you would do in that. You would say, uh, you would make the subtle shift in the culture and you would say, instead of giving honor as a gift because of office and station in life, you would get even the most spiritual among the people to start saying, no, no, me obeying you and me honoring you, you've got to earn that. And he turns the culture on its ear by ruining the worldview of its people that are told clearly in the word of God that we honor those in office because of the office they choose, they are elected to or they brought into. Um, and I can rip apart a culture in a country by taking honor and turning on its head in that way. Now, if I was Satan, that's what I would be up to. And he has done, uh, it, it's amazing that, uh, anybody can get married these days. Anybody? And, and, and what he has done, what the evil one has done to our definition of, of Genesis, when it says, uh, male and female, he created them. Right? What he has done, uh, to that and, and the way that, uh, when you begin to say there is no longer absolute truth and everything becomes relative and your truth is your truth, but don't try to make your truth binding on me. And then you go, what happens there is that you go to the lowest common denominator of what depravity is, and that is the baseline of your public discord. And so as a result of that, as a result of that, the challenge before you, the challenge before us is a God-sized puzzle that he and he alone can navigate and that he and he alone can redeem. Um, and so in the midst of that, we are called to be loving and light in a dark place. In the midst of those things, we are called to be loving and light in a dark place. Casting a, casting a biblical vision out of love because we know that the reason that he commands us is because he loves us. And he wants a particular order and life for us. Right? Remember first use of the law was first use of the law? Curb or, or, uh, uh, fence or, um, have any of you run over any curbs lately? Um, so the idea of running over the curb means that you go in somebody else's lane and, and you get yourself in trouble and injured and other kinds of things like that. He doesn't want that for you. He wants you to be able to have a particular kind of life. And when you get to commandments four through 10, what he's saying to you is, I want there to be honor in your marriage. I want there to be honor in your family. I want there to be, I want there to be, uh, order and structure so that you are blessed and, and you are a blessing in the way that you do this. If you will do this the way that I command, then there will be, there will be order and harmony and blessing in your life that I want for you because I love you. I love you. And so, and so have you ever had a, have you ever had a son or a daughter that, uh, you told to do something? And they didn't do it? Julia, is your mom in the room? Is your mom and dad both here? We could, we could have a conversation in front of God and everybody, couldn't we? Um, but we won't. God love you. Um, we, have you ever, uh, but I will, Janine and David, have you ever told either one of your kids? Have you ever told either one of your kids to do something and they did it? But the timing and the way that they did it caused you heartburn and a higher blood pressure? Yes? She's where, is he gone? Is he gone? Okay. So, um, the idea that God wants for you, the idea that he wants for you is he wants to give, uh, a mother and a father that both love Jesus. Uh, they want to give an opportunity for that love of Jesus to be handed on from one generation to another. And so he, they want to be able to have godly parents raising godly children to be able to be in harmony with one another and to obey, uh, when they're told to do something so that then they would enjoy respond by doing what they tell them, when they tell them to do it with a joyful heart as a way to make their lives better. Because making your mom and dad's life harder is no value to you, Julia. So, um, so Luther then expands this and so does the word of God. Turning your bibles to Romans chapter 13. I don't know if I should do this on a day like today. Romans chapter 13. I can't believe I'm going to take you here. Um, this is the kind of stuff that a pastor ought to stay away from. Submission to authority. Submission to authority. Now remember, remember here, Almighty God loves you and he wants a life for you. Um, and, and he wants you to have a structure and a life that is going to bless you. Let me just ask you, in the book of Romans, do any of you know about the authorities? What do we, what do we know or what have any of you studied about the authorities in the day in which Romans was written? Was it a, was it a God fearing culture with integrity and truth? The authorities that they lived in the midst of? It was not. It was not. And so the culture, the authority that you live in, in this season of your life, however it is that you feel about it, it's not like this doesn't apply because they had something different. Okay? That's the only point that I would make here. So let's, so out of this guise of being able to say to you, I want, I'll, Almighty God says for you, I want you to obey the authority and to do that with honor and respect and respect the office because they hold the office, not just when they earn your respect. But I want to be able to give you that opportunity that with authority, uh, you have a harmonious relationship and you are honoring and respecting them. Um, and, and so part of the reason Luther expanded from mama and daddy to the authorities of your day is because of Romans 13. Right? Romans 13. Um, so would somebody begin reading Romans 13, one? I want to get through verse seven, if somebody wants to read that far. Does that Bible passage have anything to do with the day in which we live? Is it hard? Is it hard for you? Why is it hard for you to hear that? Yes? Yes. Most definitely. True. And you know, if I really had guts and I was going to be leaving anytime soon, I would, I would ask you this question. If you're a Democrat, raise your hand. If you're a Republican, raise your hand. And I can guarantee you that there are both in the room. So this idea that, uh, what you just said takes place, um, is not just a, a, a recent election issue. It's, uh, one side of the aisle or another. Uh, there are issues connected to honoring and respecting the authority. Yet the word of God commands it. So how does the man of God or the woman of God navigate that? Remember Almighty God loves you and he wants a particular kind of life for you. And this has to do with you, your mama, your daddy, your kids, your grandkids, your neighbor kid. No, not your neighbor kid, your, uh, your family tree, right? Um, honor, obey, respect. Honor, obey and respect. And then Luther from passages like this in his meeting would expand that truth to authority in your life. If it was right, so let's begin really local. If, if it was right among you, how would you feel about the police when you see them? Huh? You would what? You would definitely see yourself as being on the same side, right? Right? Notice this line in Romans chapter 13 where it says, if you're doing right, right, uh, he will commend you. You're on the same side. You're in this loving relationship. You can honor them. You can buy them. Don't. Sorry. That, that filter jumped in there just a little bit too late. Um, so the, uh, uh, but the idea of honoring, respecting, uh, local law enforcement. Um, and then if you get on the other side, if I'm, if I'm, uh, if I'm driving, just keeping up with traffic. If, if I'm driving 95 on 94, just keeping up with traffic. You ever been out there? It is joy filled fun. Um, and I get stopped by the police. It would never happen until I got over into the Wisconsin border. Uh, but I get stopped by the police. I, I get stopped because I have been doing something wrong. Yes? I have been doing something wrong. Um, does he have the right to hand out consequences for my bad behavior? And in that environment, in that understanding of my relationship, that when I do wrong, he says in Romans chapter 13, be afraid, be very afraid, because he does not wield the sword for nothing. But notice that it says he wields a sword to bring punishment on the wrongdoer. And when that happens for us, it helps, it helps to bring order to the culture, the country, the community, the neighborhood in which we live. Taxes was, I, and I totally agree with him, taxes, uh, but I would just say one of the prices of citizenship, right? Um, so there's a, there, there's a really messed up thing that has been handed down from one generation to another, but it's not in the word of God or in our teaching everywhere. You ever heard this idea of separation of church and state? Right? Uh, so what God, what happened is that we began to say that Christians have no role in state affairs because of separation of church and state. That's, that was never the idea. You have, uh, you are, you have a citizenship in heaven that out, that outweighs everything else that you will ever face while you're here on earth. But while you're here on earth, you also have a role to play that has sacred things connected to it. But it also has secular things connected to it. And you need to, as all, as, as a sacred being, handle them according to the word of God and be involved. And let your voice be heard according to the ways that the law and the authority says it's okay for you to be involved and to do that with gentleness and respect. But to be involved and let the voice, the voice of Christ be heard in the midst of the darkness. Whatever that looks like for you individual. Make sense? Yes, Brandon. He is God's servant for your good. Notice. So when we dive into this, it, uh, notice, uh, notice that when this was originally written, it was written about Roman authority. Right? It was written about Roman authority and in that environment in which it was broken as it was politicized, uh, as it was. And everyone out to maintain their own power, authority and control at just about all cost. In that environment, he says these words. He says these words. Um, and so, a, a, and so for us now in this day, he calls us, he calls us to exercise the rights that we have as citizens. Um, that if someone is wielding their authority in a way that doesn't easily allow you to understand how it is that we are all on this side together, then we have this opportunity to speak into it, to visit with and to support those who do visit with. I have a, I have a really, really good friend. Uh, I was the point guard of the seminary basketball team and he was the two guard. He walked onto Michigan, um, I didn't, um, and, and we, uh, and, and we love each other deeply and, and we give thanks to God, but I can still beat him one on one. Um, and his name is Greg Seltz. Uh, Greg Seltz, you know, you ever heard that name? Any of you ever heard that name, Greg Seltz? Greg Seltz was the Lutheran Hour speaker for a little while. That was me and Greg were the two finalists for the Lutheran Hour speaker. Uh, after the pastor from Woodbury turned it down. Um, and I took my name out and they chose the right man and I thank God. Uh, Greg did a great job. Now he is the leader of the Lutheran Center for Religious Freedom in Washington DC. That, that's where you would find Greg now. And now with the change of administrations and promises made, um, that center has taken much, it has been brought from the margins of Washington, this DC much more toward the middle with many other groups, with, with many other groups to develop a way whereby, uh, whereby the idea that, uh, Christ and Christian discourse would remain in the, in the marketplace of ideas among, uh, those who would set our laws and run the country and run the world. Um, uh, Christ would remain as, as a voice in the midst of that. But he is one of the center Lutheran Church Missouri Senate voices for that effort. And so, uh, God, God has, uh, God has put him just in the right place at just the right time. And so we, we pray for him around those things. But that's an example of working through the system, our support of men like Greg and people like Greg, your support of godly, God fearing governors, senators, uh, leaders, your prayer for those who aren't, that God would turn their head and tyrannize. I love this word. One of my favorite words in all of our lexicon, that God would tyrannize world secular leaders daily with godly wisdom. That they would not be able to escape the voice of God in the marketplace. Um, and, and so, uh, and so in that I've said, support those who are in office, pray for those who are in office on both sides of all those aisles. And then there are many other things that you can do. Join Luther's for Life. You can, you can be involved in all kinds of different things that are a part of your passion or things that you believe are wrong. There are things for you to do individually. And we need to get after that or support those who do have the voice to get after that. Uh, it takes gifts and abilities to argue. You ever, I'm, I don't want to, I don't want to do that. But Greg does. Greg does. Yes. And you know, we have, uh, we have, uh, being a member of a congregation that is a part of the Lutheran Church Missouri Senate, you have an illegal, you have, yeah, an illegal, you have a complete legal team at your disposal for the sake of taking your stands. Um, and so we as a people of God, if we take our stand, we do that through the system. We do it with dignity. We do it with respect. We do it with honor of the civil authority. Uh, and we do that well, but we stand in that gap and we take our stance. That's each one of us. First of all, as individuals. Then you ask the question, well, what is Trinity Lutheran Church preaching and teaching and doing in those regards? Almighty God would say to us, uh, uh, so, so, uh, Bob and Tom and I, um, Kevin, uh, called, um, all of our called workers, we are called into a public office. You know, the word all, uh, public in that word means on behalf of. The word public means on behalf of the family of God that we represent, right? Um, and so, uh, and so we as a, we as a congregation hear the word of God say to us, uh, we preach Christ crucified. Um, and so you'll never hear from a Lutheran Church Missouri Senate pulpit that I know of without consequence. Uh, you'll never hear, uh, even though, even though apparently the, the culture and the country and the federal government says that it can be done without penalty. Um, you'll never hear one of us, uh, proclaiming, uh, our devotion and connection to a candidate or the politics of the day. Um, we will, we will love and support everybody who has a passion. For example, out of all of the topics that we could talk about, um, we will love and support everybody at, at Trinity who has a passion for right to life issues. And we will support that mission and that ministry as well as we can. But you'll never hear me preaching about it from the pulpit because of, because of the need for us to proclaim Christ and Him crucified and to represent well those things connected to all these things. You won't hear us, uh, warring against the politics of the day. Uh, but what you will hear us doing, uh, what you will see is that behind the scenes, you'll see your pastor say, you know what? This congregation has fallen off the horse when it comes to your respect for your civil authority. Um, and it has ruined your opportunity to help people in the neighborhood because you're too worried. You're too worried about whether or not you're going to break some tax code. So one of the things that happens is that you've got, you've got all kinds of people all around the neighborhood who need God's help through you as a congregation. And yet Lutheran Church charities and, and other people who want to be in it with us hear Trinity saying, no, we're not going to do that. Because if you give to help an individual, then it becomes taxable income to the individual and it's not write-off material for you. And people actually call it, if you try to give, if you try to give finances to help a specific individual, um, and you want to get credit for that on your giving, then the, then Uncle Sam says that that becomes, that becomes taxable income to you and untaxable to give. And people want to get credited on their giving for those donations. And it becomes a form of money laundering. So that's, that's what you faced. And instead of, instead of finding our way around those things to be relevant in the community and in the neighborhood, honor Uncle Sam and find our way around it for the sake of helping in the culture and the country and in the community around the neighborhood. The congregation through risk averse leadership got to a place where it was just saying no. That cannot be who we are. And at that place, then your pastor needs to stand with all of you and say, hey, uh, we need to find our way through this and around this with integrity. But we can't become irrelevant to meeting need in the community in the way that the church and Almighty God calls us to meet need. So it's part of the great, it's also worse than any, in Illinois than any other place I've ever been. Right? I, y'all realize you're in Illinois, right? Yeah. Wow. Um, and, and so, and so unwinding all of that and, and becoming relevant and walking alongside Uncle Sam, but yet rendering to Caesar the things that are Caesar and rendering to God the things that are God and keeping those things straight, but understanding that at the end of the day, if I have to defy the culture in the country, I'm going to do that. I'm going to expect consequence. Um, and I'm going to honor the consequence, but I still got to do it for the sake of being relevant in the neighborhood. That's who we need to be. That makes sense? None of you have any questions about that? So, uh, and this So, and this, I had planned on getting on all the rest of the commandments. So when you think about the fourth commandment, right? When you think about the fourth commandment, it is one out of all 10 in which Satan has, 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 has had a heyday in the culture. And the heyday that he's had in the culture connected to marriage and family and respect for authority and the integrity of systems. So that you would have a life that God wants for you. He's made great ground. Satan has, he's made great ground in the place in which we live and the day in which we live. And we need to walk in the middle of that in such a way that we take back what is ours when it comes to our relationship with Almighty God, our place in marriage and family and whole high those things among us. I believe that God would use those things if they were hallmarks among us, and they are. But if they were even more hallmarks held up among us, God would bless those greatly with people who are looking for that bright light in the dark world and the culture in which we live today. So it's also, this is a different topic, but same commandment. We, you guys ever heard of this term, the sandwich generation? What does that mean? You're caring for your kids and you're caring for your parents. Right? Or maybe even your grandparents. And from one season to another, when, when you are that young man's age or you're Julia's age, it may, it may mean doing what mom and dad said and doing it the way they said and when they said to do it, so that there would be harmony in your life. And you don't have consequences, but you have blessing. Right? That's what God wants in the family system. It may also, it may also mean that fathers need to hear Ephesians chapter six, verse four. Fathers and mothers need to hear Ephesians chapter six, verse four. And on behalf of Julia, I would ask David Kelly to read this passage. Ephesians chapter six, verse four. Can you read that for us, brother?
Father.
No, that's good enough. Thanks, man. No, I didn't. So the idea, the idea here is that children are meant by Almighty God to honor and obey their parents. But that makes an assumption. That parents are not exasperating their children. What does it mean to exasperate someone? Any of you nurses, asper, aspirate? What does that have to do with? I like exasperate better. What translation is that one? Yeah, throw that away. Don't ever use it. Provoked to anger. And so, and so there's a bunch of emotion around the initial stages of a relationship between a father or a mother, a father and a mother and a child, son or daughter, in which the way that they come at them provokes them to anger in the beginning. And there's all kinds of emotion around that. And then at the next season of that, if it doesn't get healed and repaired, comes exasperation. If, if I'm X, that means out. Asper has to do with wind. If I'm exasperated, that means that you have knocked the wind out of my sail. And I'm frustrated to the point of giving up. Therefore, I end up saying things like, whatever. As a parent, have you ever heard that? I just wanted to beat the snot out of you. Sorry, sorry. Can't do that anymore? So the, so the idea of this passage is that in this loving relationship between you and your children, you and your grandchildren, the family tree, there is meant to be this harmony where when we raise them up in the nurture and the admonition of the Lord, we find out the way that they're wired and, and do that in such a way that the harmony of that relationship allows us as the parents to still command and expect obey. But do that in such a way that we build up, we don't tear down and knock the wind out of their sails to where they've lost, they've lost hope and they've lost their place with us or in the family. And they check out. So so in that, God doesn't want that for you. God, God does not want that for your children or for you. He doesn't want that for you. He wants for you this life where you're, he even says about elders and pastors, one of the requirements for elders and pastors is that they would manage their family well. Because how in the world are you gonna manage the household of God if you can't even manage your own family? That's in effect what the text said, right? And so he wants this life for us and he wants it modeled by your leaders for, for, for the people of God. And, and then all of us, children and parents, we all in all of this, all of this, the second use of the law is what? Huh? A mirror. A mirror. So when we talk about this fourth commandment, we talk about you and your family or we talk about you and authority and we talk about the authority around us. Are you convicted at all? And if that's true, then the second use of the law has done its work. The law has shown you your sin and your need for your Savior. So that then, as we cry out to you on behalf of marriage and family and relationships and structure, we cry out, oh dear God, I need you, my Savior. I need your forgiveness. I need a new start. I need for you, I need you. Then the gospel, the gift of Jesus begins to mean what he wants it to mean for you every day. Fourth commandment. Question. What is the fifth commandment? Don't what? Don't murder. Turn your Bible to Matthew chapter five or six, I think it is. Sermon on the mount. Five, five twenty-one and following, five twenty-one? Twenty-one and twenty-two, five, Matthew chapter five, verses twenty-one and twenty-two. Jesus is talking, you know how I know? Cause it's in red. Praise God. So, so Jesus is talking and here's what he's trying to do. He's trying to bring all of their Old Testament understanding of the ten commandments and our relationship with Almighty God. He's trying to get us to see that fulfillment of these things is found in Him. But he really wants to show them their sin and not have them walking around as if, what must I do to be saved? Keep the ten commandments. This I've done since I was a boy. Okay? Then go sell everything that you have and come and follow me. He, he reaches into us and he wants to be able to know and understand that each and every one of us need to understand that we're guilty of all 10 of them. So that I don't try to get in with him on my own self righteousness. And instead at every turn, he shows me my sin, my need for my Savior, so that then my Savior means what he's supposed to mean for me. And he does that for me because he loves me. He loves me. And he wants this life for me that's all founded and grounded in the gospel. So somebody read Matthew chapter five, verse twenty-one and twenty-two. Okay, thank you. So if we just read verse twenty-one, you've heard that it was said to the people long ago, do not murder. If I just stopped there, would any of you be guilty? Raise your hand if you've ever killed anybody? Nice, Tom. You should have told me that before we installed you then. Who, praise God. But then you read verse twenty-two. He says, you've heard that it was said to the people long ago, but I tell you. Right? He's saying, don't live on the surface. Many of us, many of us Christians, many of us Lutheran Christians, we are still at this point in our lives swimming way too close to the shore on our Christianity. The water's really shallow and you're content on the beach. And God calls you out where Peter walked. Out where the waves are high and the water is deep. And, and, and the, and the work of Almighty God is, is desperately needed in the midst of the life that you're living. It's time for you to go deeper. And one of the ways that he does that is that he says to you, you've heard that it was said to the people long ago, right, surface? Hey, I've kept this one since I was a little kid. I never killed anybody. I'm good, Jesus, I'm good. But I tell you, he says, that if you've ever been angry with someone, guilty. Have any of you ever been angry with anybody? Is there anybody here in this room that's never, ever been angry with anyone? I, wow. You're in the right place. You're in the right place. It's, this, this, this place is a hospital for sinners. Welcome, welcome to the third ward. The, the idea for us is to go deeper and understand. He wants to show you your sin. Because he loves you. And he doesn't want you to walk around in a faith that rationalizes as if, well, at least you're not as bad as that guy over there. He wants you one on one between you and him to be convicted. So that then you are prepared and ready for the sweetness of the gospel. This is why Lent in the Lutheran Catholic traditions is so important. What are we doing during Lent? Why do we go into that? Why do we pull back on hallelujah? Why do we, why do we sing all of the, all of the dark minor key? You worm. Remember we used to say in the liturgy, a worm, for such a worm as I, remember that? You were called a worm. Should we pull that one back out again? Do that one? You worm. Why did we, why did we do that in Lent? Huh? Self-examination. It's preparation. It's anticipation. It's going in from Ash Wednesday all the way through Holy Week up through Good Friday. The mountain top experience then from Good Friday where we sing, Were You There? Right? Father forgive them, for they know not what they do. The idea is that he would show you your sin and your need for your Savior. So that when Jesus lives, dies and then rises again from the dead, he would mean for you what he is meant to mean for you. And Easter would really be your Easter in the way that you meet the challenge of that day. And we, we spend seven weeks of the church's time getting you ready for Good Friday and Easter to mean what it's supposed to mean for you. Because he wants to show you your sin that all of us have sinned. Yay, but by the grace of God, go any of us. For all have sinned and fallen short of the glory of God. And so he loves you. Wants to show you your sin and show you that your anger does not produce the righteous life that he required. Guilty. Can't, can't justify myself anymore. And so there's nowhere else for me to go but on my knee. Crying out to him for help. The law having its way with me. So fifth commandment. Fifth commandment, thou shalt not kill. And, oh gosh, we'll come back to this. We'll come back to this commandment because there are other aspects of this commandment that we need to talk about. And it comes up when Luther gives us his explanation, right? Let's close with a prayer. Dear Father, I thank you for the journey that we're on together. I ask you, dear Lord, that you would forgive me for going so slow. Dear Lord, be with us. Pour grace out upon us. And allow us the joy that comes from watching you walk us in and to and through out our life together. Build us up, bind us together, strengthen us for the journey before us. Be glorified in all we do. Pour your grace out upon Bob and Tom. Pour your grace out upon Doug. Pour your grace out upon me, all of us. Pour your grace out upon this amazing staff that you have brought together here and all of these people and the endeavors of a lifetime that are before us. Dear Lord, be glorified and honored and show us what you have in mind for us. And build your kingdom here. In your name we pray. Amen.